All right, being 701, we can get started. Call to order this tonight's meeting of the Stowe's Joint Board of Appeals. We'll kick things off with some of our administrative items. We have two sets of minutes, March 4th and March 11th. We've got some preliminary red lines from Andy. As Michael strolls in. Directed one minute. All right, so we'll take a look at our March 4th minutes. If folks have any edits, we'll just go through those, starting on page one. Page two. Page three. Actually, going back to page two. The second last paragraph, which is David's having to write an overview. I think just for tense purposes, the last sentence should say, the present hearing session would discuss, or just present here, present hearing session discussed, but even will discuss. Just keep it tense, consistent. And saying the last sentence, he stated that he would be in. Page three. Page four. On page four. Court from the bottom. It said, Mark, okay, to know that the depth of the wells, you just see the wells are from other properties, there is no concern. Maybe it should say, Mark, only noted that because the depth of the wells. Page five.
Well, he's on one. Page four, is it 300 feet? I thought it was 400 feet.
I can double check. Do a quick measurement of it, so it wasn't said.
Yeah, it says 100 to 400, but usually something the size is 400 feet.
Pages five and six. Page seven. Why, she bottom, page six, last paragraph. Andy, the middle name is Miss Gold. Should be the Andy or Andrew, so it's Andrew. And I think it should be stated that he has, is it a concern or all his concerns?
Will be approved in the minutes of March the 4th as amended, second.
Give a motion and a second. Any discussion? Bring none, all in favor?
All right.
Motion passes and the minutes as amended are accepted. Move on to minutes of March 11th.
David, I'll recuse myself since I was present.
All right, go ahead.
Thanks.
Recusing yourself.
From these minutes.
Oh, she was present. Oh, thank you, sorry, thank you.
Got it.
On the first page, the fifth or sixth program. Peter Brown states that the radar system can track offfalls without the illumination of the driving range. Illumination, and he went to lighting, illumination can be by radar also. Yeah.
Okay.
So anytime you see a word illumination, you want to put it in lighting. Alighted. That's how I would say it.
Page two. Actually, the second paragraph. Peter Brown presented images of the existing view shed. Is that a word?
I can, it is a word.
Oh, no. No, 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 it makes it sound, makes it sound fainter. Is it really a word, you should? Okay.
I could have asked for a new shed analysis.
All right. End of the day. Page three.
Second paragraph, point over a house, so if the hours vibration.
Yep. Page four. The bottom, page four, second last sentence. She stated that she went to just the acres, and it shouldn't just two storey. Page five.
Oh, and third last paragraph, what I generally, she believes that section eight four must be applied to all golf courses.
Yep.
It's all, all golf course.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know if that is capitalized. Yeah, I don't think it's recapitulated, it's all golf course.
Just to be consistent, on page five, the paragraph that started the house, as you said, the, the section, or three point four point three, it's capitalist. The second paragraph, that started the house, as you said, I think you misspelled your name.
Yep. I misspelled yours, because yours is.
I know, E L, and you're L E. Well, I appreciate you defaulting to my spelling for your damn stuff. Page six.
Again, mine are very small, or is it? The last line of page, page five, she stated that special, she stated that if the community does, oh wait, where did I miss it? Oh, if, if the community does care about.
They will need to be away.
Oh, they will need to be away, right, got it.
As much as I want to finish this, it's 7:15, so we'll just pause on this, we'll return to it. All right, so we have, it's 7:15, so we're going to pause on reviewing the March 11 minutes, and turn to the public hearing for the application for special permit for 114 Barton Road. I'll entertain motions and notice.
A move, a wave, notice, second, if you can turn.
We have motion and a second, all in favor? Hi. Motion, okay. Notice the wave. So, is there someone here for the applicant? Can we see, oh, great. So, briefly, this is an opportunity for the applicant to describe their project. We have the materials that have been presented. The board will, is welcome to take comment, to make comments or ask questions of the applicant during the presentation. Afterwards, I will open it up for public comment, including to any butters. We will then return to the board, as a quick reminder, any comments or questions by individual board members, it's not a statement on behalf of the entire board, the only statement on behalf of the entire board will be the decision if and when we vote on it. So with that, I will turn to the applicant to briefly describe the requested projects.
Hi, can you hear me? This is Paul Rocker, can you hear me?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, we have an existing shed, and we want to put another shed in its place that's bigger, that can hold our stuff that we have in storage. So we're requesting a 10 by 14 shed. In the existing area where the, the current shed is, to accommodate, you know, the extra storage. We don't have a basement or an attic in our house, so this is really just to store, you know, our boating equipment in the winter and stuff like that. It's going to be, you know, we're going to put a pad underneath it. It's going to be fruit standing shed. It can be moved if needed, but I don't intend to move it once we place it.
And I'm sorry, perhaps I missed it, what's the size of the existing shed?
The existing shed is six by eight, no, six by 10, six by 10. To 10 by 14.
I don't see where it goes on your plan, do you have an idea? Can you describe where it goes?
It's going to basically go where the existing shed is and extend to the left, you know, four more feet. And extend out another four feet from the edge, so, you know, six foot. So it's pretty much going to be in the same place, except overhanging. It's very far from the lake. And easy access for us to get stuff into it.
The plans I've seen, I don't see a shed at all, so. You know where it is, Mark?
There should be a picture of the shed right on the, the large, the, the big drawing.
We have the pictures of the shed, but I don't know where it's going.
No, not in that, on the big drawing.
Oh, I didn't see this.
This is a 10 by six, it's going to be a 10 by eight.
But this is their property here.
Yeah, that's their property, right.
So.
This is their property, not that.
Yeah, we're looking at the drawing and we see a shed, but it looks like that's on the other property, not your property.
So they're using the aerial imagery service that Stowe has, I was able to find shed. It's located south of the house between the property, between the road and the existing dwell. On the other side, there's a garage.
Okay. Okay. So basically, right next to the garage.
Yes, yeah, basically where this is, iron pipe is, I guess.
Yeah, where the iron pipe is.
Yeah.
It's probably rusted away.
Okay. So, just to be clear, that the shed is going closer to the, at the same location, but it's going to extend closer to the house, or closer to the street?
Yes, closer to the house.
Okay, I'm going to go that way. Okay, into the property, right.
And right now, I'm guessing it's right against the property line?
It's a few feet, maybe three feet from the fence line.
Is it going to get now that it's wi- a wider building, is it going to get closer to the property line?
That way, it's longer.
Okay. I thought it was, I thought it was, it was like eight by 12 to a.
A 10 by 10, six to 10, 14.
Okay, I was thinking of six was like, yeah.
Is the height the same?
It's a little higher, not much. It's not a very tall shed. But there's no wires there or anything coming in.
Yeah, there's no, there's no, there's no electricity going to the shed, there's no water, nothing like that.
Correct.
As I say, less than 20 feet is a plan room for a block.
So, yeah, the plan shows like, it looks like five different heights, could you tell us which one you're playing again? So there's six, eight, 10, 12, 14, and change.
I'll have to double check, though.
I didn't see anything that had heights.
It's on the front view of it, on my sheds.
And on the right side of the building.
You think it's, I have to double check, I don't have it up. Is there a height restriction? I mean, we, it's not a big deal, whatever we want.
We just want to be able to specify us not to exceed 35 feet. 35 feet's the max. I don't think we want a 35.
It's not going to be anywhere near that, it's just a normal, it just has a little dormer in the front, but that shouldn't change the, the height of the pitched roof.
Right. I think we go with just 20 feet. Yeah. We'll assume it's not more than 20 feet, let's state that. It's a prefab, so.
If the board has any more questions or comments, let me just open it up to staff, if you have any questions or comments. Any questions, I'll open it up to the public. And I guess we'll start with any of butters. Actually, before we do that, just a quick reminder. Please state your name and your address before speaking, and also try to keep your comments or questions concise. And just for the applicant, to the extent that there is any questions or comments made by members of the public, those are not directed to you, they are directed to the board, you're welcome to respond if you'd like, but you certainly don't have to. So with that, do we have any butters that are here, either in the room or on Zoom that would like to talk? Or you can raise your hand if Michael or Colin. Any other members of the public that have any comments or questions? Okay. Back to the board, any other questions or comments at this point?
Just one to clarify, did you say you were going to put that on slab?
We were considering slab or stone. Is there a preference for the town?
No, just curious, it, it shows an option on your cover sheet there, that's all.
Yeah, we haven't, you know, hired anybody yet to, to do that, but.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any final questions or comments for the applicant?
A move, we close the hearing.
Second.
Give a motion, we have a second, close the hearing. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Hi.
All right, and with that, we will have closed the public hearing, we can no longer take any comments or questions from members of the public, nor take any additional information from the applicant. I will turn it over to the board for a brief discussion. We also have a draft notice and decision, if you want to watch it that way, any press impressions, any concerns from anyone?
No good, sir?
No.
This seems to be a bigger shed, that's all.
Sorry, one sec.
Well, I'm sorry, it just seems to be a bigger shed, but it doesn't, you know, impinge on any, any issues or requirements that I can see. It's not, it's not over 35 feet.
Sorry, go ahead.
We should put on the decision, like, about where I just want to go.
Yeah. All right, you guys, we've got a couple minutes, do you want to just literally take a crack at the decision?
Yeah.
All right. All right, let's just jump to page two. And then you want to, like, section two, you want to, like, add a sentence to where you do. Oh, actually, wait, hold on.
Number six, maybe a good place to do that?
Yeah, either five or six. Yeah, if you can add a sentence.
North, I think it's, that's a south property line there. Can't go north exactly.
I think we can just say that the proposed, the proposed location shed is on the same location as the current shed, but extending.
It's not documented, though.
Oh, well, I guess technically that's true, yeah.
Off the, three foot from the property line, off the corner of the neighbor's garage, or something like that.
Yeah.
In the, in the rear corner of the property.
Yeah, there's only one rear corner.
Sorry, is that a condition or a finding?
Just a finding.
A finding. Is that right on number four, a block foundation?
Yeah, that's why you.
I just highlighted it because that's, I just made an assumption, so that it's either stone or concrete, or stone or slab.
Yeah.
Foundation.
They probably want to do a block or something like that, it's cheapest. Let's move to.
Any other changes, updates, comments, additions to the findings?
Okay. A move that we grant special permit for 114 Barton Road for the construction of a shed on the property.
So. What was it doing, or? Okay, all right, motion, second, any discussion, or none, all in favor? Hi.
Hi.
A move, approve of the draft decision for submission to the applicant.
Second. Any discussion? Yeah, I'll, oh, go ahead.
Did you want to add a condition that it should exceed 20 feet in height, and is that?
Oh, I forgot about that. I think we said 20 feet, didn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did say that.
So. Put it in the same place where it was located. Not to exceed 20 feet.
Do we need to make a condition about your location's going to be?
If he can move around, I mean.
It's a shed.
Yeah, I know. Okay, all right, so we'll just add that.
Water, yeah.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor of accepting the decision as amended?
Hi.
All right, with that, to the applicant. We have an approval, five zero, of the draft decision as amended. Tom, staff will be in touch in terms of next steps. And otherwise, best of luck with your new shed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, turning to the next item on the agenda. Excuse me, it's a continuation of the hearing of 98 Pine Point Road, it had originally been continued from March 4th. Excuse me, it's a continuation of the hearing of ninety-eight, uh, Pine Point Road, it had originally been continued from March fourth at the partial request of the applicant, who had requested a, uh, longer extension, we provided for a one-month extension. Is our representative of the applicant here?
They are not able to.
Oh, uh, and how do we know that?
I was told.
By? Or, uh, so, sorry, by, I assumed by that.
Yeah.
Okay, when?
March twenty-first.
Okay, um, do they say why? I'm, I'm sorry, I, it sounds like I'm interrogating you, and I don't mean to.
You gotta have the answer.
Okay.
I.
Okay, all right, um.
Let me open here first.
Um, well, I thought.
Did you?
Okay. All right, well, if I didn't do it formally, I'm reopening the hearing, I thought I had already said that. So, okay, so we had put basically two conditions that, um, we wanted them to show up, which they haven't. And also, um, to provide a plan, which we don't have, but we do have a signed contract, that indicates that a plan should be put together within four weeks of when it was signed. Which, I'm sorry, I should have brought that up, which would basically put them in the middle of April. Though, I'll just be clear, we don't have any proof that they've actually paid the money, that would be required under the contract to create the plan. Yes, sir.
Reading through the plan, it's not exactly what we are looking for. The scope of the services, existing building location survey and certified plot plan for the proposed addition. We need that, yes, but we also need the lot lines staked out, so we know where the property lines are, and that's not included, specifically not included.
So actually, I think down below it says special instructions, number one is lot line stakeout.
And additional stakeout, and as built services not included.
Oh, not included?
Yeah.
So, we've got, not to kind of cut to the chaser, but you've got two options, either A, we. Well, let me ask you, did he request an extension of time?
Not formally, I, I told him that it would be, a request would be needed, and I'd say the board would give up to a month's extension.
Right.
But I, I have not received anything formally, I think he was in favor of a one-month extension.
If he asked for it.
But I don't have anything in writing.
One-month extension from this date?
From today.
Oh, today.
So our next meeting.
Right, which would be on May sixth. So we either essentially unilaterally give him an extension to May sixth, or we deal with this right now. I'll open it up to the board.
I, I would give him an extension, let's get, you know, more clearer communication from him what, what he wants, I mean, apparently he did want the extension, but he should have done it formally, but let's find out, you know, um, is he gonna be able to provide, we're giving him the extension, but he should provide on the information that's missing by May sixth.
The problem is what he's getting right now is not adequate, so.
Plus, we did ask him to appear and give him what, four weeks' notice, and he didn't. Whether in person or by Zoom, well, actually, we did ask him to show up in person, right?
Yeah, yes. The only thing bothers me, yes, he has kind of ignored us and gone all his own.
Yeah.
Leisurely pace, but he does have some money involved in this.
Yeah, the only, that, my only hesitation is that like, and I, I only said, I don't know if he's paid, but if he has paid.
But he's also paid us for the application.
Well, no, I know, I know, um, and so, I'm not, I'm not opposed to one more month. But, I mean, I, I can't imagine us going beyond that unless we get everything we need. I know.
Or at least a response saying, I need more time.
No, I mean, I did, I don't, but, but see, I'm, I understand, but I mean, at a certain point, it's like, how much more, I'd rather you just. Start from the beginning.
Again, my, my thought is that, you know, depending on what we get, we might have to tell him to go back and get more.
Well, all the more reason to tell him now, like, hey, by the way, I mean, he can amend his contract and tell the, you know, tell these guys, I'll give you another five hundred to plot out the lines. Yeah.
They're gonna take a survey anyway, they might as well put a stake underground.
Exactly, so, but if someone feels otherwise, I mean, please speak up.
So do we have a clear list of things that we expect him to come to the table with, and we should just communicate that to the applicant and tell them why we need it, and this is the end, right?
Yes.
Yeah, explicitly saying, these are things missing, aren't they? On what we see of what.
Right, and we do not have these in hand.
Yeah.
We sent him a letter originally, I think.
Right, yeah.
We're saying exactly what we wanted.
Probably just dusted off.
Yeah.
Okay.
Reiterate it.
Yeah, all right, well, in that case, um, I'll make, I'll, I'll make my own motion, I'll make a motion that we extend the hearing to May sixth at seven fifteen.
I don't think chairs can make motions.
Oh, come on, really? In that case, I'll entertain a motion.
I know that we should, we continue this hearing until May the sixth at seven fifteen.
Okay, second.
All right, any discussion, all right, the only discussion I'll say is, and as part of that motion is that we reiterate to the applicant.
What the requirements are.
What he needs to have in hand, and he has to be here, and I would say explicitly, if those requirements are not satisfied, there will be no further extensions, I think we have to.
Yeah.
Any other problem with that?
No.
Okay.
And once again, I'm abstaining from this one because I wasn't on the original hearing.
Just to be. Yeah, thank you, Ruth.
Another thing is just, he's got problems with his docs.
Well, that's.
I know, but, I mean, he needs to be able to address all that stuff.
Well, you know, you'll have to, but let's just get over the first topic.
Okay.
So, all right, any other discussion? Okay, with that, we've got a motion and a second, a motion that's seconded, that's pending, all in favor of extending the hearing to May the sixth at seven fifteen, and we're giving it to the applicant as we discussed.
All right.
All right. Motion passes. All right, we'll revisit it one last time. All right, and with that, uh, we will now continue, I will reopen the hearing, uh, our forty B hearing with respect to the stove acres, room of course, and the comprehensive permit. As previously discussed, tonight's hearing concerns stormwater management and wetland permitting, um, the order of operations for tonight is we will provide the applicant with some time to, uh, provide a little bit more detail than what has already been provided with respect to those items. There is, there has been some correspondence, including from the Conservation Commission, and we have, um, the conservation representative conference here tonight, so, um, after the applicant, provides their sort of updated presentation on these topics, my intention is then to turn the floor over to the cons, to the representative of the Conservation Commission to, provide any thoughts or comments or further questions, I would just ask to not repeat what's in the memo already in detail, because we have that in front of the board, and write it to the applicant, and then we'll open things up to members of the board, and members of the public to, uh, to discuss, um, just administratively, we also have two other pieces of correspondence with respect to this topic, um, one from the police department and one from the planning board, um, it's not my intention, though people can otherwise, to not really reference the police department's comments, because those seem more appropriate for the next hearing, which is about mobility. The planning board's got some topics in there, so people should feel free to raise those, we also have in hand a, um, the career peer review report, which although dated April third, was received by us, I believe, three and a half hours ago. Yes?
Three.
Okay, so we received it three and a half hours ago, you received it, you know, uh, whatever, um, so, um, obviously, the applicant has received it, I'm expecting that he has detailed responses to all fifty, all fifty points. So, um, I doubt that you've had a chance to even really review this, if, if you have anything worth mentioning to it, we of course welcome it, but I would just say to be somewhat prepared to provide any responses, you know, in the coming weeks, um, so, um, but, um, you know, and certainly if you have anything in writing, we'll happily take that in advance, um, especially because some of these topics that we've obviously will be talking tonight, and we've always talked about before. Whereas the easiest, most expedient way for us to receive those sorts of communications would be great, um, especially for the items where they talk about, hey, you know, perhaps we should be asking about, you know, X, Y, and Z. I think those are the ones I would focus on.
Yeah, I did have an opportunity to do, uh, just a quick review, I was trying to decide.
No, yeah, of course.
The same thing, so we, we, we will go through and.
Yeah.
And provide a detailed response, I'll try to do it as quickly as we can.
Oh, no, of course.
To not merge it with the next meeting, but, uh, a lot of that information, um, those comments I felt might be relevant to the conservation issues as well, so.
Right.
There's not a heck of a lot of new stuff that I have to, to offer, we've provided, you know, the, the general overview from the drainage design, which, which hasn't changed. I had, had, had the opportunity to do sidewalks with many of the board members, not all of them. And, uh, conservation members as well.
It's a small talk, okay? All right. Uh, so, the, the only other reminder for members of the public is, as always, you're welcome to write comments and questions, once we open it up to that portion of things, if you're not able to or not comfortable, please provide us, uh, information in writing, it's actually probably your direct way to provide us with that information. Please keep any comments and questions to the topic at hand, um, as we do have one, two, three more meetings, uh, to discuss some, some other topics, so with that, I'm going to stop talking and turn it over to the applicant to provide any additional information on stormwater management and wetland permitting.
Sure, and again, I'll just do a, a, a brief overview that kind of summarizes, uh, I think some of the conversations more with, with, with Concom. Board members for the sidewalk or site visits that we did, that they had an opportunity to get a better sense of the site, we talked about some general concepts, didn't get too heavy into, uh, any detailed issues. So the overall drainage concept, as we have discussed before, we have a series of, um, drainage swales and basins that run to the center of the site, the detention, uh, bases, as we're heading down to the low point of the site. That's dealing with much of the roadway, uh, drainage, um, the individual homes, uh, all have subsurface infiltration designs. Each home has their own to deal with, with, with roof runoff, uh, and we've got subsurface, uh, drainage designs in the back as well to deal with the, the cottage areas. The peer review did do a pretty detailed review of it, talked about stormwater, po, stormwater management policy. From my brief review, looked pretty favorable, that there wasn't a whole bunch of issues. You know, we talked about a few ideas, talking about driveway width, I mean, roadway width, and some things that, you know, that we'll evaluate, and talk more specifically about some labor issues that I'll, I'll need to go through more specifically as well, and those things I'll respond in a subsequent meeting. In talking with, uh, reviewing the Conservation Commission memo, as well as, uh, you know, key considerations that we talked about with the board members at, uh, at sidewalks that we did, really three or four key areas, I, I think, that kind of, uh, you know, they have particular concern on, we talked about, you know, we have requested to, this to be reviewed under the State Wetlands Protection Act, not the local bylaw, um, one of the key considerations of that.
From the last car change, light change, he was the only car that got through, and he was.
I'm sorry.
There on our green light.
No cars were on our meeting. So, uh, we talked about the thirty-five foot buffer, there's some areas that we're, that we're close to it, uh, the other thing that we talked about is how we, we deal with it, we've got a, you know, a variety of, of areas, um, we've got a hundred and twenty-four homes being built, we've got a series of them that are in the wetlands that aren't. So we talked about it, it's better to manage with individual orders of conditions versus, uh, a general one, I, I think the feeling was, particularly for homes that are in the critical areas, that individual ones would be better for, for everybody, that they can be dealt with individually, reviewed, managed individually, and, um, constructed and released individually without the, the overall entity dealing. So those are some of the general concepts, the, the, the areas where we're closest, uh, really, uh, along this section here, we've got some areas you can kind of see vaguely on this, that we actually have some retaining because of some of the grading that we're dealing with. And, and just dealing with the grades from the street down towards, uh, the wetlands, this is, this is really the most critical area. Along here, uh, we talked about, this is essentially a, an isolated area, um, but it is connected by a pipe to the, so it is a, it is a protected zone. We've got some wetlands, you know, kind of in the trees here that we've generally stayed out of it. So one thing that we talked about is, you know, whether or not, uh, it makes some sense to potentially, you know, maybe take a house from out of here and relocate it to take some pressure off of this zone. And, uh, I think that's, that's something that, that warrants some conversation, get some, some feedback from Kathy on that. The other kind of critical issue, or the critical, critical area that we talked about was back here, this is the, uh, the Avenue C area. And in, in conversations, we've talked about, you know, the potential of, you know, moving up these garages a little bit, um, to, to pull back, you know, there's a reasonable slope there that goes down, this is a really, you know, pretty pond, they wanted to, to pull off, uh, the offset from that as much as we can. So we talked about, you know, pulling these garages.
The line is synced with this one.
Okay, um, uh, and then obviously, we'll, we'll need to do the, you know, order of conditions, or whatever the appropriate number that we agree upon from an order of conditions perspective, um, on the site, so. Again, a whole bunch of new information, they delineated, I thought, you know, really adequately the history of it, they had some general comments at the end, and after Kathy talks, happy to, to go through those and have a dialogue with the board, I figured it would be the best thing of, um, to provide more information to you, and then, um, once, uh, we get to fully absorb, uh, the drainage memo, um, and any changes that it necessitates, uh, then, you know, we could look at any kind of specific alterations that we may talk about on site. But, I think, if we can get a kind of a, of a consensus, if there's an opening, if there's a desire to, to, to shift around a few homes, understanding the trade-offs that go along with it, then we can look at it, if we don't wanna look at that, that, that's okay too, but I'm, I'm open with it, I really can't lose houses, um, and there's not a hell of a lot of space to move, but we got a little flexibility, and that's something we'll do, we can do to, to try to, you know, split the difference or, or maintain a, a balance between the wetlands impact and, uh, and the homes. So Paul Kirchner is, uh, my engineer from Stamsky and McNary, he did all the, uh, the hard work, um, anything in particular to add at this point, Paul? I know you only had the memo for about forty-five minutes now, which was spoken as I was, as I was driving here, and he had just finished up some other meetings, but anything in particular, or?
Uh, no, nothing in particular, I did have an opportunity to, uh, um, very quickly go through the, um, the list of comments, and there was nothing in there that, uh, from a stormwater perspective, that, um, I think is really, any issue for us, uh, primarily just provide additional detail on this and that, so, um, we can certainly do that, uh, so, nothing really, I feel the need to add at the time.
Yeah, I, I felt the same way, I don't think it necessitated any substantive changes, maybe some tweaking and some details, so, um, so that was positive, but we'll, we'll finish that review, and on the basis of that, we can incorporate any changes that, uh, the board or the commission, thank you.
Fortunately, I was to Concom, I know that in their memo, uh, March twentieth, there's not the peer reviews, um, they had flagged, it was like sixteen different sort of questions and comments, I don't know if there was anything in particular.
I thought if we could do, we, we wanna. And then we could go through it.
Yeah, 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 no, that's like, that was.
Okay, I have some notes, and I can submit a written comment in conjunction with the drainage. Okay, I have some notes and I can submit a written comment in conjunction with the drainage. I just wanted to make sure that they work together.
That's fine by us. Kathy, I don't, do you want to talk or are you having someone else?
Um, I'll start. So Kathy Spira, Conservation Director, and I have four commission members with me here today. Matt DeKewitz is our chair, and then on two, we have Serena Farman, Liza Madison, and Stephanie Lynch. So I don't have a lot to present. I think, you know, mindful of your request not to recede within our memo, we kind of said it all here. I think that, as you know, we will still be reviewing the hydrogen of the Wetlands Protection Act. And, and so, you know, we'll have an opportunity to look at some of these issues as well. You're being asked to waive the wetland bylaw. So I think we kind of viewed tonight as a little bit of a working session to have you have a chance to ask us questions, or, you know, these are trade-offs we might make. Do you have a preference or that kind of thing? So I think we're really here as a resource for you all tonight.
Okay, one of the things, I'm just going to sort of jumpstart, and this might be jumping too far to the end. But I guess you can answer this now or you can sort of think about it. Because the way I see it is that, you know, there's always like a wish list of saying, you know, I've got all the time in the world and eight billion dollars, what could I do? But then there's the, okay, but I don't have those things, and so, you know.
There must be one more light.
So one thing that I think would be helpful.
So just a second please, this order. So there's an individual that's online who is having a sidebar conversation with somebody else. Could you please pay attention to our meeting, and if you're talking to someone else, put that on mute, please? Thank you.
Thank you. So I think one thing that would be helpful, I mean, if you have a comment now, you're welcome to. But one thing that I think would be helpful, at least for me in particular, as we sort of proceed, is sort of like, you know, in terms of like the different buckets, you know, it's like, yes, these are all the dream things. But in reality, like, these are, you know, this is what we can, what we really like. Or this is the real concern that we're trying to get at.
I can ask.
Guess that didn't work.
I think there's a phone that just keeps coming off mute.
I think it might be Liza, and she's trying to look at the materials for this meeting. She's one of the Conservation Commission members, so I think it's just she's trying to juggle while commuting, so.
I'm also thinking, I see her seatbelt on, I think that the directions that are coming into her phone are overriding her mute. That's what I think it is.
Okay.
Oh, she's not trying to look at the plan.
So that, absolutely, I see. So, but I think that's one thing that, you know, we're going to want to sort of kind of think through. Because, you know, trying to, trying to see sort of what, what are the critical interests and how to achieve that? Presumably, there's multiple, there's potentially multiple ways to achieve that. And if it also, if there's a situation where something can't achieve, but there's an alternate form of mitigation, where we might be able to balance it off, you know, I think that's something that's particularly important. You know, because I could imagine, you know, a stress point to say, well, you've got X homes that are in a spot that we don't necessarily like, and then the counter is going to be, yes, but those are also the most desirable homes because of the location that they're at. And, you know, trying to work through some of that. Because I will say, from having looked at it briefly, you know, the applicant is not that far off by saying, there's only so much room to move, you know, and yeah, I mean, it's really, you know, this is, the plan is really unspotted in. So, dang, that's a sort of an introductory comment. I'm happy to have this go, and I agree with you, I think a sort of a working conversation is the right way to go. I'm happy to have this done different ways unless people have sort of preferences. We could start, we just need to kick things off to go through some of the questions and comments that were in Concom's memo. Unless there are particular topics or issues that people on the board would like to talk about. I think silence is, no.
Sure. Memo first would help.
Yeah, yeah, so maybe we can just kind of start off that way if people are okay with it. So I guess, Mark, I'll turn to you, you know, happy to go through this. And then we have one through sixteen or? Yeah, 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 or if there's, or Kathy, if there's any that are particularly big that you'd say, you know, I really want to start this way, we're happy to do it however folks want.
I think a lot of it, you know, the first couple of pages are background and some of the history of the wetlands elimination. To me, kind of the most relevant stuff starts with the section on local bylaw versus issues. And then sort of into the questions. And, you know, to go to your question about wishlist, and not completely answer it, but you know, I think, I think for us, you know, we're used to seeing projects that are at least thirty-five feet from wetlands, or that's a goal that we try to achieve. Recognizing that this is already a somewhat disturbed site, that it's a different kind of project. We know that that's not going to be possible here. I always try to think about construction and, you know, sort of anticipate what I'm going to see when we're in the middle of construction. And to me, when you have a retaining wall or work happening right at the edge of a water body, you know, I, I see the future. And no matter how much erosion control, you know, you end up with siltation into the water body. So, you know, to have like a five-foot setback or something like that as a minimum, I think, would be a goal. And then to look for some mitigation on the site that makes sense, that isn't too onerous. You know, I think we tried to point out some things that were low hanging fruit, if you will, that the applicant might be able to do, so. And that, I'm not went into that five, it's just.
No, 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 no. Yeah, yeah, no, no, I know, absolutely. So, Mark, happy to sort of tick through things in the memo. If you want to just kind of go through that list at the end, one through sixteen, as sort of just a guide for discussion. Don't, just so folks know, don't feel like we have to go through this numerically. Happy to, if people want to bounce around or leave some other questions, I think that's the point of all of this.
I think that sounds good. So the first, and then one comment, there was a comment on erosion controls, talking about the preference of silt areas and straw bales and some areas that we use the twelve inch built in that the superbursts would, I think, we reasonably agree. In areas that are critical, the silt fence and the hay bales certainly is appropriate. There's other areas where I think that the, that the potential for impacts are very, are minor. So I'd like to be able to incorporate both, that I think we can reasonably agree on. Stormwater management policy, and we'll review it as we, as we go through. The, okay, miscellaneous questions, how are the two drain lines shown on the plan there stationed four hundred showing the drive treated? So what is referring to is in this front area, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, this isolated area for flooding and, not for flooding, this isolated wetland area, relatively isolated. And there's this wetland area in the sea line that you can't see. There were two drain lines that run to the existing pond. Those will be maintained, they will be protected, we're not taking them out, they will still function. If they need to be beefed up, we can beef them up, but those will continue to operate and will be protected as part of the construction. Short access path to the shoreline of Dogbone Pond. We all love the Dogbone Pond. We had kind of shown, you know, potentially the, you know, Peter Flinker had put in, you know, it might be nice to be able to get down closer to the water, have some kind of a landing. If there's particular concerns about that, we don't need to do it. It's, you know, we can put some seating up here, it will be kind of pretty overlooking the pond, so we can certainly pull away from access. I think part of the town's plan, ultimately, will be making this somewhat of a focal point. There'll be plenty of means for people to have access, we don't need to create one that's controlled by us, not the town. So consider it removed. The existing pump house, we will intend to remove that. That is over in the back here, where the wells will be located down along here. There's an old pump house that's not being utilized, so we'll clean that up and get rid of it.
And it's a question real quick, what's the status of all the water bodies on the property right now? Are they fairly clean? Because no one's maintained them for years or tried to protect them. What kind of state are they in?
You mean in terms of weeds?
Weeds and whatever, I.
Lily pads, but I haven't seen any major issues.
Okay, that's just when it's there any issues in them.
And I think it's because of the golf or somewhere in there whacking things. It's in to keep it low on the.
I see others that are really in bad shape, I think people throwing things into them and all that, and I just.
Yeah, some of them here, I think the next, the next question is really more the issue of the existing logs. You know, they've, they've been dumping stuff in certain sections, which it seems like for quite a long time. That, I don't really want to touch them. I don't know what's going to happen with, if I go down there, if we take them, what the impacts will be on it. So, you know, first blush, the intention is, is to kind of leave things as they are, not go in there, disturb them. Certainly, we're not going to be adding to it, we won't be doing any dumping anywhere on the property, particularly there. There is the question about the Vernal Pool investigation. I did authorize Dave Crossman to review the area. That I could get, was that further up on the dog pond or was it?
No, it's in the depression where the trees are, so under your wrist, kind of up here in there.
Yeah, okay, yeah. So I did authorize Dave Crossman, who was my wetlands consultant, to go out, gather the information as the time was appropriate this spring, and we can work to get that recognized. So I have no problem with it, it doesn't impact what we're doing. It's something that the town wants to have the benefit of and the knowledge of, certainly, to do it. So we, he is proceeding on that.
Partly, just to answer part of your question, the two front ponds there are loaded with golf balls. And actually, Snow Acres has somebody that they have come and fished them out of the pond.
Like scuba guys that go in there.
And golf clubs possibly.
I don't see golf clubs, but he equals hundreds of golf balls.
Okay, yeah, sure.
Yeah, yeah, and they resell them, so.
Is there any life in the, I mean, is there, there a fish?
Yeah, fish, muskets, beavers, frogs, bees.
Yeah, and one thing that we talked about, and you can kind of see it along the edge here, where the wetlands are, there's all this kind of thick scrub brush, and it's awful, prickly stuff. So the discussion was that we'll try to, you know, leave some, leave as much or leave, leave some of that to provide an arborist upper, it keeps, we'll keep people out of there just because it's, it's awful. And it's a, it's a good protective place for animals and wildlife because it's awful. So they can hide there safely, so. Okay. The number five, portion of the access path that crosses the Fordham Wetlands area on the east side of the property must be constructed on a boardwalk on piers. We're talking about, you know, this area down here, we actually go into the wooded zone. There is kind of a wetland kind of fingers that come up. So there will be a point that we need to cross those wetlands. And I was advised exactly what those piers are, so we can deal with that. For those areas where the crossings are, we reiterated the conversations. I mean, the Concom, I think that's the same opinion of what we've talked about, and we've talked about with that before, is that, you know, the path can be somewhat organic, we're not taking down trees, we're going to maneuver around things. We'll pick the best location to make that crossing, we'll do that crossing in conjunction with the, with the board once we get it set, but we'll certainly meet the needs of what they're looking for. Number six talks about the head walls going to discharge into the wetlands. And we've agreed, most of those are flare dam pipes that are coming in. We have riprap around them as part of the design.
I'm going to have to ask, what is riprap?
I like the big rocks that are there to, so that, you know, if the water is coming through too quickly, you don't have the rocks, it'll just pull the soil away from it. So it, it helps keep it in place and cut the velocity. There were some questions within the drainage comments about the velocity of the water and riprap, but it's all related to the same stuff, and that's standard design procedure.
So it's just going to be a larger riprap or?
Depending on the size of the pipe and the amount of load will dictate the size of it. You know, you've got the small, medium.
Yeah, right.
It'll be done appropriately. And we don't have a full drainage, but we're coming into this, I think, you know, we've got pipes coming in this way, we've got pipes coming in, I think, through here. So those are the two hundred pipes, I think, so we'll make sure that those are properly riprapped and protected.
Has it all gone through storm drains and like that?
All of that, street drainages, yeah. And so all of, you know, and again, there were comments in there about, you know, there might be some questions that some of the piping sizes weren't incorporated. So we'll go through, make sure that they have that information. But yeah, generally, that is the pipe flow that comes through. Snow storage on site, snows do not be posted to the wetlands or on the pedestrian trails. We agree. We can have them put together a more specific snow storage plan. Obviously, we've got wetlands, it's not going to go into, we do have pockets of open space, people have driveways, so I think we have adequate area to do it, but we can memorialize that on a, on a plan. Exterior lots, number eight, exterior lots will not have the same shape on the plan, there is some variation. This is where we, we talked about how we deal with the filings. And I, I think, you know, particularly in the areas that are close, we deal with them as individual filings for the houses. So the different shapes, lot coverage can be addressed and dealt with. I think there are, you know, there are other areas, like, you know, but behind, you know, five through eight, where that wetland, which is over on this section that we talked about, that there's this little wetland finger that comes out. You know, we're not as close to it as we are there in other areas, so that could be an area that we, that we do one if it's all treated as one section, similar to this area around here. This road's going to go in all at once, so there's no reason to have separate orders for the individual houses. So I think we can go through and reasonably agree what's the best way to deal with the individual areas. I think we will have a number of orders, but I don't think it needs to be an individual order for every individual house that's in the buffer. I think we can reach agreement on areas where we can bundle things based upon the potential impacts. And so that, I think, will work pretty well. Proposed plantings are not specified, but should be native and ideally species that will thrive as temperature increases. That's agreed, we can have them put together a list of native plants. Peter did the landscape design, Peter Flinker, who's done work with the town, did the design, so that's no problem. And that can be agreed upon within the NOI or with this board, however you feel like it. Number ten, we would recommend that proposed infiltrations not be fenced in a manner that would interfere with wildlife that movement across the site. If possible, it would be desirable to not fence those areas. We don't think fencing is necessary, based on the grading, it's all kind of pretty mild here. It's pretty mild here and setback as well. Couple of areas that we may want to have some guardrails as it relates to motor cars for snow. The back end of this drive, it drops off after it, so we'll add some TDM details here just for protection for vehicles. And this section here with the, you know, with the multi-family, you know, it might be an area that we have proposed garages that we've talked about, but if it isn't, you know, some guardrails there might be appropriate. So we'll incorporate them in those locations that, you know, from a safety perspective, we think is relevant. But we didn't intend, you know, we've got walking paths that are coming through here. We think that this, we intend to be a feature, a function, and that fencing won't be necessary. So we agree with the board. Permanent conditions in line with typical things, responsibility for construction management. I talked with Paul about this, he said that the town's typical process for construction management is reasonable and appropriate. So I'm sure we'll work out reasonable and appropriate construction. So community gardens, garden plots involve significant management, fencing, water, all this stuff, they don't like them. We're flexible, we can try to look at some other alternatives. Obviously, the, the area that we're talking about is, is back here. You know, this is kind of an open fairway, it's a long area. I, I think the most, you know, significant aspect that we, that has been discussed is that it's really not set up to have people drive their vehicles there. So if people try to deal with soil and trying to deal with things, it could be problematic. So if it's something that, you know, that the commission is uncomfortable with, that the board isn't enamored with, you know, it isn't something that has to go in, you know, whether we look to do it in the future at a different location, in conjunction with the residents or in conjunction with the board, you know, we're open to it. in conjunction with the residents or in conjunction with the board, you know, we're, we're open to it. You know, so much of this is tempered by the fact that they've got so much open space and recreation that's around them. If we didn't have the potential of a hundred and ten acre playground, I might be more adamant about it. But I'm, I'm not gonna jump up and down about having something specific here. There are other opportunities in town for the same function. There will be significant, significant open space. So if there is a discomfort in what the potential impacts could be, we don't need to do it. And and, and I won't be sad. So.
Two, two questions just to remind me.
Yes.
Are they reserved only for residents or?
Those, the intention would be for residents, yeah.
Okay. And then in terms of who's gonna manage it, is that the, the HOA?
They're residents, so that would be an association management. Yeah, that would be the community corporation that would oversee it, deal with it, direct it, et cetera.
Gotcha, okay.
And I, we love community gardens.
I was gonna say.
That's not what she tells me, cry.
We just, we don't. It's a limit like having sixty tenants in close proximity.
And that is what they were stressing, that they do have them in town. They understand some of the issues that are involved. It isn't. It was a bit eye opening to me when they talked about, you know, how much heavy lifting there is to keep these open, operating, functional people late nights in the sandbox. So I, I don't, I don't, we don't need to have them given the, the wealth of open space that we have in the area.
Kathy, is part of the concern kind of where it's located, that it, because it's in the back of the property, it's less accessible as opposed to if it was someplace else?
It's not that much that. I think there's a couple of questions. One is whether the trees actually that are long, the, well, long will end up shading the gardens, cause they're south of the gardens. But the other thing is just, you know, we know from experience, people do wanna drive to their garden plots. They need a source of water. They need to fence to prevent rabbit and deer damage. And as I was just saying to Matt, there's a ton of like, your weeds are coming into my garden.
Oh, jeez.
You know, and we have to manage all of that, you know, and it's a lot.
Yeah. I'd just, just to be curious, the, the, the other community gardens in town, are they? I guess, is there like a weed list? Are they full?
Um.
As of now?
It's a mix. So there are on-town conservation lands on Totalane, so, so back then, we have three different kind of garden experiences. We have perennial plots, annual plots, and raised beds. The raised beds are full, the perennial plots are full, although we usually can accommodate a couple of new people every year, and the annual plots are not full. So most people start in the annual plots, they try it out. If they like it, then they move into a perennial plot. The biggest difference is the perennial plots are fenced. And people can leave stuff, so like, if it's your plot, it stays your plot until you wanna leave it. The annual plots, you can put up a fence, but you have to take it down every year, so that we can file and harrow them. Okay. It's a long answer though.
No.
You know, I've had a garden many years ago and the major problem was water.
Yeah.
And it wasn't always easy to get to. And it seems like they would need a water supply there. They could always use this, you have a path going to the gardens. You could always use the little gator, gas powered carts to take your things in and out and make it a homeowner's association. Make an electric cart for that matter, and they can run out there with their stuff and put it back and then people can use it. So one or two items like that provided by the homeowner's association provide access to it when they need some beef to move.
Yep. I, I'm.
I see a road, cause it's kinda steep there in a few areas.
It, it does. It goes, it goes up and down, so.
It'll be difficult for a road to go in.
Yeah, so, yeah, and it's not even the road to get in. It's, it's how the roads would, how you get there.
You can't get there.
Pathways and that kind of stuff. So that, I, that was, you know, ultimately, you know, a more sizable consideration that I think is, is reasonable. So.
And parking court.
Correct. So if the board have a particular feeling, keep it on, take it off, I can live with it either way. And we can do it. It's also something we could look at as initiative for people, gauge demand, gauge interest if it's something that they want.
Just, just to be curious, if it wasn't there, would it just be open space? So presumably you could keep it as open space, but essentially go to the HOA after everything's been taken care of and say, hey, by the way, if you ever wanted a community garden, that's a good spot up there. What you decide.
That's a way that we could do it. And, you know, some of it would need to be done in conjunction with it, because it's in there. But we could just hunt and if there's sufficient interest, then take the time to go through and, and work with them at that time as compared to dealing with, you know, some of the heartache and work of, you know, knowing that there's some deficiencies and then kind of struggling through it. And I think whether or not there's, there's interest, you know, there is other stuff in town. It strikes me as one of these things that we could spend four hours talking about.
I was gonna say, yeah.
And it ends up not being a, a critical component for the site, or there may not even be interest. So, um, okay, and maybe we put in a, a, a condition that these have been contemplated. And if the association chooses to do it, then the board is comfortable with it in conjunction with the COMCOM. So we kind of split the baby that it's recognized that this, there may be, if there's interest, it can be pursued. If not, then it's open space and it stays at it. I think that's kind of where I'm at at this point.
That makes sense to me, too.
Yeah, definitely.
Thirteen, just another headache.
Oh, that's right, we're on thirteen already. Okay. Locations where residents can access the adjacent town land. We were looking at different locations, part of what is, and I think generally, we're, we're looking over here and we don't have connections. We have them in the front. We can get to them, you know, in the back. We can get to them back here. We can get to them here. So we, we've got, I think, different areas. This is the, the, the issue. Part of it, you know, I looked at, geez, do, do we wanna run it right down somebody's driveway? That didn't seem like they'd really like that. Well, separation between the homes is relatively narrow and having that as a, as a pathway wasn't exciting. So what we looked at was potentially running one of them here, Kathy, kind of between, I think this is twenty-eight and one oh five. There's some grading here, so we could kind of work the path into here, so that they get access to it. You know, we've got grading along here, too, so it's not like it's a, it's a smooth transition. So this seemed to be the better location in terms of working around the potential interests for people. If we were going to make adjustments with the lot here versus over there, that might give us some flexibility to open up a little bit more of a lane that we could look at if we do that. So those are the two, the two ideas where the conduct, if that's.
If I might, I can.
Absolutely.
Sort of the evolving plan.
Absolutely.
The town is working on. Um, but what it's seeking up to look like, all subject to the presentation of the draft comment, all that stuff, is some sort of a rec building and parking area down in here. And then an access road that would be coming along here and kind of a main parking lot up in this area. So, and then everything would kind of build off of that. So if there was a way to kind of get people into here or into here somehow, maybe down here could work, but.
That would be an idea, okay. So I think we have the front two. I, I mean, certainly, you know, we could put one in here. There is a kind of a natural bridge between these two ponds. So we could have something that comes here that's tied into the overall, you know, the overall sidewalk network. You know, we have this path that is kind of continually going to the town land. So we could have one here. We could have one here at the back, and then I think something can free up if we can get some space. But, you know, in here, again, we've got, that stuff, that's. We're really.
Parker motion.
Yeah, we don't wanna go through there. So. And, and here, again, we're dealing with the attention basins with gradings. It's going down, it's going up. You know, there's piping and connections and riprapping stuff in between them. So I, understanding what the plans are, I know we can do one, two, three. If we can figure out something else in here with some movement, we'll do what we can do to try to get that to, to match up. Fourteen, management decisions regarding the open space would be, uh, the, you know, a certain amount of it will be homeowners with lot areas. But generally, it will be the homeowners association and the, the community corporation that's overseeing it. That would be the, the body that would dictate how that space could be utilized, what can be done with it, how we can deal with connections, maintenance, et cetera. So that would be the, the governing body to ensure consistency with plans in the town.
Kathy, what sort of, you say, is there opportunity for the town to string, what sort of role are you envisioning beyond like advisory? I mean, are you looking for something more?
I'm not sure. Um, you know, as I think about this area, you know, Mark's settled on land in the back that will be interconnected with trails on town land. You know, there may come a point where we say, gee, can we make the main trail network accessible? You know, that would be our trail plus the trail on his land. You know, how do we have those conversations? Maybe it's just advisory. Maybe we have some sort of Stow Acres Park Advisory Committee that includes homeowners down in the town.
Yeah.
Um, you may not have to resolve it here. I think we're just raising the question.
Okay. Yeah, I mean.
I, I mean, I, I, I see. Uh, you know, in, in some ways, we, we have the, you know, there's the, there's the path and the walkway, I think, that there'd be communication on. And I, I think there'll be more communication going from the town to the association as compared to the other one. So I think as, and maybe I'll build into the, into the, the community corporation that they designate a trustee that is the, the town liaison to deal with those issues specifically. It, it's hard to say what it's gonna be, but we can really just stress that there, there is the town owned land, there is this property. There, there are shared assets and that there needs to be communication. And, uh, you know, there'll be some mutual agreement on things. So I'll build that into it and we'll see. I don't know, I don't, I don't wanna put a, I don't, I don't think it's appropriate to have a town official on the corporation. I don't think you're suggesting that either. But I think recognizing that there will be a need for a liaison and that somebody is specifically designated on the board to do that, so that there's always a person you can call, hey, these are problems we're having. You know, call Bob as compared to who do I talk to? How do I get somewhere? I think, you know, the communication and the, you know, the shortest path of communication, I think it's usually most of the problems that come up is nobody knows who to call and nobody knows what to do. So I think if we can establish that within the, within the documents clearly and stress its importance, that, that's probably the best we're gonna do at this point. So I can review that. I know we have a meeting on that stuff. I've been, you know, building on it, so I can incorporate that into it. Fifteen, can there be a small four to five car parking lot at the rear? Kind of talking down here, so if people wanted to, to get into the path, we designated down in this section, there'll be, you can't see it on this plan. You know, but a, a pump house for the water, potentially treatment as well as the storage area, the tank. So that's kind of the area that we talked about. You know, this has to be beefed up to be usable as an access drive to maintain well issues. I talked with Don Proventure, who was here on the previous meeting. He said that, you know, they'll, they'll allow passive recreation, but not vehicles, not storage. So he didn't think that was a practical alternative to set that, because we are generally in the zone one. And if we, you know, we move it further and further away, we get further and further away from the brook that no one's gonna wanna carry. So I don't think that will work just as a nature of DDP guidelines.
That's a long haul.
It is. And a bike rack, yeah, we can have, we can have bike racks in the back, whether we wanna, you know, have something over towards this area where we, you know, we, we took that off or, you know, something back here. But, uh, no, certainly open to it. So if residents come in, wanna bike to the back and then walk around, we'll, we'll make it, we'll make it available to them for those purposes. So that's a, a yes. We killed those sixteen. We didn't even argue.
I know, Kathy, you guys have flagged certain units that are sort of the most concerning, I guess. I think looking at the gold area on page four, is that right? Of the, one, two, three, four, five, six. Thirteen, fourteen, of the fifteen units. Yeah, I hate to, I hate to kind of, it's like, which are the, you know, if, of those, whatever, fifteen, those fifteen, like, which the, which are the ones in which area I'd say the most concerning?
Those that don't know when you have them, it's the most important they are.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah. So they're listed as, well, let's go through it. So Mark, why don't you flag it? So it's units five through eight. Those are the ones that, uh, twenty-one and twenty-two. Forty-three through fifty.
Really this area here.
Yeah, and then forty-four and, well, hold on. Kathy, is that a typo? Did you need to do that? Sorry. Units forty-three through fifteen and then forty-four and forty-eight. Sure.
So drop those last two.
Oh, okay. Excellent. See, we just took care of two units. We didn't realize this.
Another grading for alley C, that's, that's this area here we talked about as well. I added the areas that I had, I had, I had hung it up before. Yeah, there was discussion, there's the temporary sediment basins that were designated down here. And then I think in here somewhere. Uh, you know, there's one that kind of, I think, clipped the thirty-five feet, otherwise we stay out of it. Practical aspect is those are the low points. So that's where, that's where the temporary basin, they kind of really need to go to those two areas to deal with. But we can look to get out of the thirty-five foot of the one that was close and just reshape it. But I think that's a good deal. And the other ones, I, you know, I, I think we don't have drainage issues with the board's permission. I can, we can look at alternatives of, of shifting a house over here. And I can talk with, with Kathy and she can communicate with the board about balancing those, those impacts as one way or the other. If that frees up some space, there, there's more, there is a good amount of drainage here. It's got a little cluster. I think I mentioned it before, we, we had homes over here. We shifted the roadway to, to stay out of the wetlands on the back more. Uh, and took a home from here, stuffed it in here, and it, it's a little messy here. So we may have a, a little more flexibility if, if we put it back in this zone and, and work with that area a little bit. If the board doesn't have a, a particular concern about it, of where it's located and, and we're, we're dealing with to get conservation's feedback, if we could have an opportunity to communicate with them on that issue to try to free up some space. We can work on that in the next, you know, between now and the next meeting and, and give you some feedback. So if anything, it would just take some pressure off of this particular zone that I, I know is a particular concern to them.
So, yeah, so for that zone, that's the units forty-three through fifty?
Yeah.
Yeah, so. Like, so how much of a, like how deep into the thirty-five foot buffer are you?
It varies. It, 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 it comes up and loops around in some areas. I think this is probably the closest one. Some of them were not in the thirty-five, so it, it just, it, it varies. But we've got some areas that are, that are tight. In talking with, with Paul, when I've overstated things, Paul, uh, you know, he felt we could, we could improve that area and, and come away from it with, if we got one of those houses out of there. Now, it, it will put, it will put some, some stress on this one, but we can see what the balance would be between one wetland versus the other one. I think there was a feeling in, uh, the site talk that if you were gonna pick what's the more critical area, the feeling that this was a more critical area than, than this one. If this didn't have the, the pipe connecting it, it's a question of, of if it was even, you know, to be considered a wetland or a jurisdictional body. So I, I, my sense was that, you know, these areas that the board may feel that there's more flexibility in terms of the importance of that wetland within the overall environmental scheme, if that's a fair statement, Kathy. Yeah.
Just because you're not, you're not suggesting removing a house, you're suggesting basically moving it essentially from one side.
I never said remove.
No, 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 I know, I know, I know, I know.
Correct.
Yeah, but you, you, you said a lot, so I'm just trying to unpack it.
I think, looking at the plan, and Mark and I have talked about this, forty-four is the most problematic. That's the one that's turned sideways.
Yeah, that's this one, right?
Um.
And originally, we, we didn't have a house there. Oh, right. It, it, it was over, it was on the side of the road. We tightened up that road, we lost some space, and so.
How, how close is, I mean, how, so for forty-four, I'm just kinda curious. How close is that house, like physically, like the structure, building?
To the wetland?
To the wetland and to the other homes, only because by squeezing it in there, like, I mean.
Are the, are the offsets to the other homes is generally consistent, it's the the offset, and Kathy has the plan open and could probably answer that better than I.
Looks like it's about halfway between the thirty foot, so like fifteen foot from.
So fifteen to twenty feet.
So the retaining wall is six feet from the edge of the hotness.
Okay.
So that's closer than the house.
About half the house is in the thirty-five.
Yep.
And then forty-eight, about half the house.
Which one's forty-eight, sorry?
Uh, I think, uh, forty-four, five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight.
Oh, because of the, because of the curve, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so this, this is the closest.
Right.
And if we can move that and, uh, do a better job in that area. At that will, we will review that, it doesn't seem like the drainage created, you know, drainage. The peer review, you know, created any issues that we need to use that space, address it any other way, so. Uh, I can work with Paul and I'll work directly with, um, with Kathy and the commission members to get some feedback on alternatives. Um, and if they are open to something that we can present, then I'll present it to the board. My feeling has been, there's been a number of things that we've talked about. Doing piecemeal plans gets super confusing for everybody, and I know you're not asking for that as well. So, but my feeling is like with these variety of comments, once we get. Probably through next week and have, I mean, the next meeting, and we get the feedback from traffic and circulation and make sure that. You know, we've got a consensus, then I'll have the engineer do a a a plan update. Some of it is just, some of it is just detailing and and that kind of stuff, but any modifications that we've talked about. We'll incorporate, we'll distribute that set of plans to the board for, um, for review, so it it doesn't get confusing. So I think we've got a little bit of time, but I think if we work with them, we can, I think we can improve that zone a little bit.
And and just to piggyback on that, correct, bounce it off to other people, I think that's a good idea, especially after the next meeting, because. That'll be about mobility, but the meeting afterwards is more about, I hate to call it the paperwork meeting, but it really is about sort of like corporate organization. I would be shocked if that would result in any change to the plans. So that's, that's the period of time where if you're gonna produce like a new plan and incorporate all the others, that's sort of the sweet spot there.
That's my, that's been my feeling as well, I think, yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense, so.
So with regard to the tabulation of the puts and the takes, who has that master list? Are you maintaining that?
I I have several.
So I I guess I'm concerned that we don't have a list or a governing list. And that there's an opportunity at some point, before we actually wrap this up, that we can make sure we go through that list. And then reconcile it into the plans.
Oh, uh, I will put one together for the next meeting, so we can have it as kind of a rolling list and. Take, I know we're gonna be talking about traffic and circulation, but maybe we, I'll get it submitted in advance of the meeting and maybe we can take five or ten minutes. And just, everybody can review their notes, make sure that we've incorporated stuff. Um, I think it's a great idea, so we're not, you know, and then I go through and change all the plans and everybody says, what about these six things? So.
But that'll be good, so we can, we can also cross-reference that with everything that's in the minutes.
Yeah, and the memos, the memos are really helpful, I've got scribbles on many of them, I'm sure you guys have the same, so. That'll be the the basis of it, I do have a, you know, kind of a running list that I have as well. Um, but I think that's a great idea, so I'll, I'll plan to have what I have for a list for the next meeting. And we can take a few minutes, talk about it, and then the subsequent meeting, we can look to have an updated, uh, uh, plan set. Uh, and I think that the plan set, and I did, because we had talked before. We have some updates, which I think we submitted, we added, you know, street names to things, we added the. Uh, Maple Dale street name and, uh, instead of alleys, we had different streets, so I have that and, um. And we incorporated the WRPD, which is on this, which again, I think I submitted to you, did I submit that to you? I mark copies for everyone.
Oh, you showed it to me.
I did, I showed it to you, I didn't give it to you. All right, so this has, um, copies for the board. That I just kind of continued the, uh, the golf name, the name, and came up with whatever I can think of. Uh, yeah, and I'll send it electronically as well, and I know that we have a conflict with Stoic Drive, um, but that has to change. And, uh, there was another, there was one other one, and you were gonna see it.
Sawgrass Place was another.
Okay, yeah, well, the only two, I I I thought you were gonna, you were gonna get something tangible, um. I didn't make the changes because I I thought we might be getting some more feedback on it. So either way, there's a a whole bunch of other names and, um. I know fire or police had some conflicts, but I don't think they had all the names, that was my concern.
So the police, um, said Stoic Drive, Sawgrass Place. Um, I don't know if Valley Three has been two different names. Are they individual names?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I will say, I think you've got Tiger twice.
Oh, I thought I had Tiger Way and Woods Place or something.
Well, you do, but I figured like, I didn't, I didn't know if that was intentional that you're using him twice.
Well, I got Nick, I got Nicholas, I got Arnold, I figured I was consistent, so.
Oh, is there, is there, is there, oh, I'm sorry.
I have first name and last name.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I th- I thought you were giving Tiger preferential treatment, I didn't notice the other two.
Oh, he, yeah, my mother did consider him to be the fifth son for a while. Uh, so there is some preferential treatment there, but, um. So that was, that that was the intent, I've got first names and last names for many of them. Um, I'll resend this to Michael, um, so that you can have it electronically and be able to. Read everything, even on the eleven seventeen, it doesn't come out. Um, the Wetland Resource Protection District is on there, which kind of runs down in this, you know, the the west end section of it. It was on the other plans, but it's so fragmented, the plan is so damn big, it's hard to see it, so incorporated on that. Um, I think we did have the the questions before about the, I forget if it was here or the COMCOM about the floodplain. And Paul's gonna incorporate in the stuff, but, um, the gist of it is that the floodplain elevation is 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 in the pond. So it's below the elevation of the wetland, so that's why it's not really reflected, um, but he was gonna confirm that and. Um, he'll either add a note to the plan or incorporate it if there are areas that it, um, it comes onto the site, but. And we don't expect it to be within the body of the development, if anything, it might be down by the river, so.
So will you go through the, uh, bylaw about, uh, Water Resource Protection District, so to do, tell us all the numbers and apply that?
Yeah, so, and I think.
We wave, we wanna know what we're waving.
Yeah, and I think in the, uh, the submittal from the peer review, he kind of, you know, he pointed out, I got some value for that, so. Um, so I'll look at his, and if there's anything that's missed, I can comment on that as well. But we'll, we'll give a a more detailed response to that, um, you know, to the memo and questions that we're answering.
Have a place for your house, make a penthouse on top of the sewer treatment plant. Go for big money. You need the credit for two houses with that.
Okay, all right, can it be affordable, does it gotta be hard?
On top of a sewer treatment plant, that's gonna be a heck of a marketing.
I think we're gonna focus on the penthouse. Focus on the penthouse aspect, it's all worth it, so.
I I I assume by the way, you did move, was it, was that a forty-four to one?
This, yeah, if we affect this area.
Yeah, if we move, say, but presumably you moved it, like, would you just sort of re-space the other?
Potentially, I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave that to my engineer to see how to best. Utilize that space, if it's just best as open space, great, if it isn't, and he'll incorporate, there there's a lot that's gone, oh, we've got the drainage pipes that are coming in. We've got grading that we're dealing with, so I think, um. Uh, you know, with a little less activity, he can, he can come up with a a less impactful environmental plan, that's the goal.
And are the homes in that stretch the same size as the home, like, at the the curve part? Yeah, I guess that would be, I guess the homes in those thirties. Is that?
Uh, really, this whole, this whole exterior loop, they're generally the same size, you've got. Two homes that we kind of made some adjustments to, that forty-four and unit one.
Yeah.
That we shifted a little bit, um. It to, because of wetland areas, but otherwise, the the box that we're showing is the same everywhere.
Okay, when you say adjust, you mean that the square footage is just slightly smaller?
No, it's it's essentially the same. Instead of, instead of it being deeper from front to back, just, that's all, that's a better way to put it. You know, roughly the same size box, just the orientation of the box is a little bit different.
Okay.
If you move that forty-four down to where you're thinking of moving it, how close is it to the wet area and how's it fit in there?
Uh, that, it it gets relatively close, um, but I'll, I'll provide it.
I didn't know whether it's, is it gonna be closer than where it is now, or?
Well, I think the feeling and Kathy, if, um, if I'm misstating it. We we may be as close, but the concern, this wetland area has a higher level of concern. Or interest environmentally than this one does, so that might be a a a better trade-off. And we don't know, um, but I think we'll submit it, but I think that's the general idea. The impact may be equal, but the impact of that area will will be better than the other.
Kathy, is it, is it true that the environmental concern in that area, the top part is more than the bottom?
Yeah, I think, um, in terms of kind of the wetland resource value hierarchy. It's probably the whole Elizabeth complex in the back first.
Mm-hmm.
You know, then Dog Room Pond, the other ponds, and then some of the smaller border, even.
And so we have wisely stayed out of Elizabeth Cross, except for a couple. We got this little piece here, so we we do try to listen, so. Um, and even within that section, as I think Kathy said, and and this is less important than this. But I think within these, that this is probably less important than this, is the feedback I got, so.
I just wanna pause right now, um, and just open up to members of the public also, to see if they have any questions or comments. Um, and this includes any members of the Conservation, uh, Commission, provided that you can't speak in an official capacity, just as. Individual, as a still resident, so, um, quick reminder, please state your name and your address. Uh, please keep your comments and questions concise, as a quick, as a further reminder, any questions or comments should be directed to the board. The applicant is welcome to respond, does not need to, if he does not want to. Um, and, um, if you don't wanna provide any questions or comments, you can certainly submit them in writing to, uh, to staff. And you can review them at a later date, so I'll just open it up to the room first, yes.
Hello, Jane, five across, uh, I'm particularly concerned about the area around, I guess, you call it five through eight. Um, where right now, I I know the wetland plan that you guys identified, is less solid than what's there right now. Right now, there's much, much bigger problems, in fact, those houses are in water right now, um.
Sorry, which one, I'm sorry.
Five through eight is here?
Yeah.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, so.
It's just starting at two, all the way to eight. In fact, two and three right now, in front of Ron's house, is is wetter than I've ever seen before, so these will be in water. And and the Gulf Horse tried to change, or to to fix the drainage when I've been in twenty sixteen, didn't work. So I'm just curious, with all, in light of all the rain we've had. Does that change the survey for the wetland, because it's a lot bigger than it than it is on the map? And it's only gonna get worse, 'cause I'm on the top of the hill, we're on the top of the hill, they get everything that comes down, in fact. And we've had rocks, so much has washed down. This year, more so, I've washed almost all my pedals, all my rocks, I have a huge trail, it's all down there now, so, um, it's a lot. More significant, so I was, is that a concern that things have changed since the first look?
I I mean, the wetlands, the the, you know, the the evaluation, it, I mean, it was done about a year, a year and a half ago or so, so we're not. We're not with ancient history, we have, we we've all been dealing with, um, higher groundwater. Uh, in one sense, the higher groundwater has lifted everything up, so there's a lesson in water now, the network before, because of the evaluations that came through. Um, as we're, you know, reshaping the land, uh, and that's really what we're gonna be doing in in some areas that. You know, that 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 drainage flow will actually, you know, will be dealt with in a in a comprehensive sense, as compared to. You know, the Gulf Horse, with all due respect, they, they can staff, they see there's problem, they go out, they stick in a pipe, that's. You know, there's there's pipes that are all over the place, because they just deal with it immediately, see, then we've got a little extra water, let's send it here, let's send it here. So you don't have a a comprehensive drainage assessment and evaluation that's been done on the site. Nor has there been drainage fixes, um, that are looked at from a comprehensive sense, and that's what. We're doing, we know where the water is, we know where it's coming from, we know where it's ending up, and so. This plan and the work that that Paul has done and the review that the that the towns engineers have done. Is to make sure that that it takes into consideration all that stuff, so that everything flows and moves and you're not. Getting this water that's stopped and that's trapped, I mean, it all moves, it all ultimately comes down here and and, you know, flows out, really this. You know, two thirds of the site, and then otherwise it comes back, so all of that is incorporated into the design. And that's, that's what these guys, that's what these guys do, so. I don't propose, I don't, you know, I'm not putting myself out there beyond of, you know, just of of paying the bills, but, um. I I think the fact that this entire area is being evaluated, is being treated as one piece, one system. And then that is broken down systematically, um, uh, to deal with the drainage is why I'm comfortable with the work that that we've done.
I guess one of my biggest concerns, I know, my husband, I know, quite my neighbors too, is that as you grade that part that's the lowest, obviously, we're all. We have new ponds now in front of my house, ponds house that we've never had before, to the degree they're not draining. They freeze over, but the bottom line is, we're afraid that as you grade it, then all of a sudden, everything starts. Flooding onto the path that's gonna be there and then onto our properties, so that's the other part, if you raise that, then we're gonna have a problem. At the bottom of my property, 'cause I have a lot at the bottom of my property.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there there, I mean, this area is 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 substantial, if you're right in here, and in most of that. Most of it is, most of it is is wooded and the water is in there, so again, eh, it it is at the bottom of the hill, so. It is not gonna go off the hill.
Well, as long as you don't raise it to the to the level where the trees are, 'cause if you raise it to the level of the trees, then all of a sudden, I'll be saying, well, this is my property, so.
No, I, and I think that 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 things are, everything is going to flow more efficiently, that's what it's been. You know, that's what it's been designed for, like I said there, you know, it it isn't, you know, ten years ago that we did these wetland maps, I did them a year and a half ago.
We didn't have the rain, we had the last two years of it, so.
We've, you know, uh, I guess that the groundwater has just gone out, it's, 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 it's made, this plan has changed. You look at it in first blush, and there's not as many changes, but the amount of changing and the amount of movement that we had to do to deal with the higher groundwater. Um, was, uh, substantial, it was months of work from from Paul's perspective. Um, and and all of that works in favor of having an effective design that's based upon the most current information that we have. So I, I don't know how, I don't know how to explain it beyond that, beyond that, um. But we we do know where the water is, they are, uh, designing for that flow. And, uh, designing for all, uh, all the impervious stuff that that we're putting in here to make sure that it works and it's consistent. But I I think that the key thing is that it is the whole system that's being looked at collectively, um, as a solution. Instead of piecemeal, um, that I I think should give you confidence, yeah, but I understand the concern, yeah.
So, I just wanna, uh, if anyone on Zoom has any questions or comments, raise your hand and Michael will call on you. Questions, comments, more from the board?
Just a basic question from my education is, I I know. With with the drainage systems, you're talking about treat, water's being treated, explain how it's being treated.
Instead of me making mistakes, I've got Paul, I'll let him explain it better, some of it's infiltration, some of it has to protect, so. He can give you specific answers, Paul?
Yep, um, so as it, uh, it is a fairly large area. We have a couple of different methods, but, um, Mark highlighted towards the beginning of our meeting this evening. Uh, the infiltration basins down the center of the, um, rough center of the parcel within the Stoic Drive Loop. Um, so all the runoff going to those infiltration basins will be preceded by deep stump catch basins for sediment removal, once they're. In the basin, we have sediment four base, which will do additional sediment removal, and then the basins themselves do provide. Some treatments of the, uh.
Paul, maybe you can explain what a a deep sum, um, basin is, people may not know what that, what that means and what the benefit of it is, so.
Yep, so, uh, deep some, uh, catch, hooded catch basin is, you have your inlet grate. And below the pipe, uh, coming out of the structure, there's a four foot deep stump, so it has dead space to hold any sediment. And then on top of that, uh, the actual pipe that exits the drain to go wherever it is going. Has a hood structure on it, so that any oil that may enter into the basin, just as a byproduct of it. Being within a paved area, uh, will stay at the top and it won't actually go out the pipe, so periodically, these things do need to be. Vacuumed out, but that's just part of regular maintenance. So periodically, these things do need to be vacuumed out, but that's just part of regular maintenance of any stormwater system.
So is how any, any of the particles or solids will drop into the base? So those can be cleaned out periodically. Any contaminants that would be on the top of soils, whether it's oil or residue, that gets, that's dealt with from that hooded structure of it. So you're, what you're sending through there is, is water that has, you know, most of those materials have been removed. And then it goes, and he's explaining it goes into a four bag. And then it continues to move, being filtered through different layers of rock and sand, which will continue to kind of clean it as it goes, as it goes through the cycle.
Okay. And then the, sorry, just for completeness, so that infiltration basin. We also have some subsurface chamber areas proposed. And while the. The way that we're going about that is a little bit different. It's kind of the same thing. Catch basin that drains to isolate a road before the runoff actually gets to the infiltrating chambers. So those isolator roads are basically chamber roads that are wrapped in fabric. So they sort of do the job of a sediment for bay underground rather than at the surface.
Thank you.
Picture the subsurface, it's almost like a septic system. If you have water that goes in, you've got this filters that the water goes through that again, you know, gets the contaminant. What's nice about the infiltration basins from an overall stormwater management perspective, you know, GDP likes the water to go back into the ground as close as to where it's, it's coming from. So instead of it raining here and we run it a half a mile down the other end for it to drain, that water goes right back into the ground in those areas that, you know, more closely mimics what's naturally happening. So that's why it's expensive because it's a lot of stuff that's under it. It's cheaper to do just a big damn hole and let the water go in it. But it provides, you know, so much better environmental fit. Aesthetically, they're a hell of a lot better looking than a detention basin as well. So, you know, there's some, there's some really specific advantages of it. But I think the key thing is that it infiltrates closer to where it's actually raining, which is a significant advantage for the overall groundwater.
You're bringing in a lot of foot fill to the area. I'm concerned about contamination of the, what kind of plan do you have to make sure that the fill is contaminated?
We'll, and then we'll do testing from, yeah, we'll be doing testing. It will be a reasonable, I don't know what that number is yet. But we're, you know, we're going to live with it. So we'll make sure that we're having a clean fill in there. I can put together something of a protocol to add so that it can be referenced. So I'll put together some information on that. Because, yeah, we don't want to put in dirt, dirty dirt doesn't, you know, all this other work we do to make it clean to start with dirty dirt. It's a terrible way to begin. So we have the same interests and the same concerns.
Out of curiosity, with these, in terms of financing them, will they require flood insurance or anything like that?
No, they're not. So at least as groundwater, it's everywhere. It's at different elevations here. I think we've talked about it before and Paul, if I'm wrong, let me know. You know, I think that the highest groundwater is down here that was at maybe around 40 inches, somewhere three and a half to three and a half feet. Up in this area, we were down to 10 or 11 feet, which is substantial. They dug down and didn't find it. Some later tests, we saw that it came up a little bit. That's where we did some changes. But generally here, the soil is very sandy, so they're very, allows for the water to flow pretty rapidly, which is good. And overall, relatively low in terms of what you can find in some other areas. So not, you know, not a terrible situation, but very common for most housing that you see.
Remind me, I know, basements?
Yes.
How deep?
Eighteen.
Okay, finished?
Up to the residents. Usually not as a standard, but some people choose to finish it. There may be some walkout locations. There was a reference, I think, on Ernie's original list of questions. Some of the cottages, maybe on slabs, those are rented, but any of the homes that are for sale would be, would have a full basement. And, you know, it would be limited drain systems and such. If we need to put in a potential for a sum, we can deal with that. But so, but pretty traditional building standards that would, that would go into that. But all of the homes would have full basements as a design plan, yeah.
I know that you're going to provide a more substantive response later. But are there any initial comments to con coms? Suggestions about mitigation, restoration, you know, opportunities that are on the site? Or they jumped out at you as saying, well, that'd be a big problem? Or are they all within the realm of reasonable?
I don't think we had a, it wasn't a whole bunch of, I really, between the brief review, the comments, peer review, and con con, I think a lot of it was all productive and another set of eyes to look at it and nothing that jumped out at me as like, oh no, that's crazy. So I don't see any problems. I think they're all things that can be, that can be worked through. And I think, you know, we've got a good relationship with, with boards. And, you know, there's, there's going to be some give and take because of the nature of the project. We understand that. I do fully believe that they have the same opinion and objectives. And I think, you know, different mitigation stuff, we can, any, any reasonable requests, I'm going to do. So we'll, we'll work through that, you know, I guess I have confidence in working with the board that we'll come up with a solution, with any solutions that, that have worked.
I just wanted to respond to some of the wetland delineation questions. And you may all know this, but I'm just going to say it. So once the wetland delineation is done by the Conservation Commission, that is set for three years. So even if we somehow missed some huge wetlands, we can become a wetland after the fact. And the way wetlands delineation works, you know, Mark Hires, a wetland consultant, goes out, like all the boundaries, we go out, we review them. We're really looking for places, not where there's just standing water, because the whole town would be wet. But where you had standing water long enough or water out near the surface that you develop wetland vegetation, you develop wetland soils, you have soils that are depleted of oxygen, so they become hydroic. So, you know, you might have short-term flooding in an area, but that doesn't create a wetland.
So I'm only just asking that. So the wetland delineation was done 2023?
I said about a year and a half ago.
Okay, so.
January 22.
January 22. And it's good for three years and the next go around potentially would be January 25.
Right.
So I'm just going to, this is a purely ignorant question, which is, does that mean that someone goes back out in January 2025? And could they potentially find something different? Or is it one of those where like, once we decide what's going on here, it's locked in regardless of what gets discovered later? I mean, and I don't know what we're doing, I'm just, I have no idea.
So when Mark gets his order of conditions from the Conservation Commission, that essentially begins a process of extending that period of time.
Gotcha.
If, for example, he walked away from the project and someone came back three years from now.
Then it would reset.
You know, then we could say, hey, we want to relook at the wetland delineation.
Okay.
In general, wetlands don't change that much that quickly. But like, for those of you who know Mark White's project off of Walcott Street, that was originally approved in 2013. He's getting ready to come back to the town. He's going to do a new wetland delineation because it's been so long. And we know that he's had beavers out there. So there's been some changes in hydrology.
Yeah. So the concern would be from the developer here that if you try to do that in flight with this project, it's going to span that duration. That there's potentially somebody that said, oh, wait a minute, stop, you have to deal with this new wetland condition. You certainly don't want to have that occur.
No, I think what Kathy's saying is that, you know, we're, we're working, we do an order of conditions, your condition has timeframe. So that essentially that order of condition becomes the new day. We didn't do anything with that. Within that three years, it expires. You do the order of conditions, that continues to go on because you've done the work that's based on it. So that's the, that's the timeframe, that's the intent, so we want to get through here, get to them, get everything in effect. It's a whole bunch of different timeframes from a lot of different things that get fed into it. But so that's, you know, I think right now I'm comfortable with the schedule of what we're doing. And I think, you know, once we get through that in the next couple of meetings and we have that list of changes and we make that, the change here, then, you know, we can start looking at finally with con con. I just didn't want to start it and then they change this and go back and forth. So, you know, we always, like con con, I, I, whenever I do them, I typically let con con be behind CBA a bit so that we don't, you know, go back and forth, that's all. So, and I think.
Mr. Chairman, sorry to interrupt, but I'm turning into a pumpkin.
Yeah, yes, yes, you did tell us that Ruth is in California somewhere. Not on this coast. So, yeah, so, so.
My lunchtime.
I believe she has, I believe she has another engagement. And so the only thing I would ask Ruth is to definitely review the minutes for any further discussion that we have going on tonight.
I will, and I'm hoping it shouldn't be too much time. And I believe that we've covered most of the substance of this evening's presentation. So thanks to everyone.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, you guys.
Yep. Just no comments, questions from the board about these topics?
When did we have the discussion about whether it's the town bylaws or the state bylaws?
Well, our request has been that the board looks at it in conjunction with state bylaw. That's kind of, I'm going to say a general standard as it relates to 40B. I, I think we can work with the board, but it just, you know, things can change anywhere, boards change all those types of things. So having that flexibility, that the focus is the State Wetlands Protection Act. That is a, an important request from our perspective, with all due respect to the local commission. So that is, we, that is not, we're not changing that request, I guess is the best way to put it. So we would be requesting the board to grant that very easily.
And we're allowed to go to, they say, because we're not experts in this area. We don't handle it every day like they do. We don't know what the bylaws or what the law says or even the bylaw says. So we need to depend on them making a recommendation.
Okay.
Just like we depend on engineers to figure out his plans for the details. We can bring up major issues with the bylaw or subdivision control law. But depending on engineer for the details. And if you want to know more about stormwater management, the state has guidelines for that. Get the manual read of this, tell your Paul about all the things they have to do and.
I was talking about this kind of 10, like two points of stormwater management policy. And I, that was in the peer review he went through. You know, it's like the, the gospel that came down, 10 commandments. They've got 10 standards that they evaluate of the kind of leading questions for all the ancillary stuff. He did come out close and then they come to, you know, generally in compliance with everything, but I need to look at it again.
But you wouldn't want to go to all the design reviews and everything, to make all the calculations, to make sure the water's flowing in the right direction as well.
But that's what they, you know, they spent a lot of time on. Your peer review spent a lot of time on looking at. I look at it briefly. It's really thick. I read the beginning, I read the end, and then the rest of it, it means as much to me as it does to, you know, other laymen. It's just the nature of it, yeah.
I think we have one last comment.
One question. So as you're talking about, you know, obviously they're not supposed to touch wetlands, right? That's the idea. I'm just trying to think, so if you're going to drain water away from wetlands, would that allow?
You're generally draining water towards wetlands. Wetlands are wet because that's what water drains to that map.
You can't drain it.
Because there's the wet, the wetland that, that we're talking about in front of like two through eight that you've got on your map here. That, so the water's going to stay right there and they're going to have it in their backyard?
Like always. The goal is that the post-development condition is essentially the same as the pre-development condition in terms of where you send the water. And you've done like a sub watershed analysis on site, back on site.
That's a three inch stack.
So the goal is that things don't significantly change in terms of volume or water.
But it isn't always, we're not trying to take water away from the wetlands. That's, that's why they're wet. Water, it drains there naturally. So what we do is that the goal is that we're not putting any more water in there than we're getting before. And we're not putting it in there, you know, in this rushing thing, you know, we slow it down. That's why we have these basins, we have riprap, we have all these types of things. And, you know, they've got a bunch of tools in their toolbox to affect how that flow goes back to where it was going before. To me, so that the pre and the post are consistent.
Am I, I'm just confused because the houses are in water right now. So you're saying there's still be water when, like, because the water that.
But they're not in a wetland.
They're not.
But it's right next to that arm that comes, literally, if you had a five foot buffer filled into that or what have you. So I mean, like, if there's going to be a ton of water and literally in the green, you know, next to the trees, then their whole backyard is water. It's off the house, so.
My engineers that the work is, is really pressing.
But it's going to be maintained then. That water should still be there.
Some of the water that is there now is just there because we've had so much rain.
But some of it's been there three or four years, but some of it's been there three or four or five, six years.
Yes, because I think so. The sum of it, that's.
If they were to do it five years from now, they would have wetlands there probably.
I think, I think essentially the idea is that if it's designated a wetland, that water should be there. But if it's outside the wetland area, even if there's water there now, that can get removed or sent to wherever it needs to be.
I'm just talking about, yeah, the wetland waters.
Yeah.
Because that's going to be, it's going to be interesting to see what happens.
And also our bylaw requires that you not increase the runoff from the land, the property, or they've got protected. Because that feeds other lands.
And it's both really, and the house should get looked at.
And he includes that in all his calculations.
Three inch.
Any, any final questions or comments from the board about these topics for this evening? We do have a miscellaneous sort of meeting at the end, so we can certainly cover anything that comes to somewhat after the meeting. All right, we're hearing none. I think that sort of closes our discussion of stormwater management and wetland permitting for this evening. So thank you to members of the public, Conservation Commission, the applicant. As a reminder, our next meeting on the 40B application will be on May 6th, at which point the theme of the evening will be mobility on streets, traffic and trains. I do not have it yet, but I believe we are scheduled, knock on wood, to have our traffic peer review report before then, correct? Okay, great.
Hours or days?
Minutes, maybe down to the minutes. You're good at it.
We'll just say to be determined. And we can also address the police department's memo, I think, at that time, as they've talked about that as well.
Yes, if I can get a copy of that, too.
Oh, you haven't seen that?
I haven't seen the police one, and they referenced through a planning board memo.
There was a planning board memo as well. Yeah, there's touches on a few different topics as well, including that one.
Both of them.
Thank you.
And to the extent that any members of boards or commissions or the town are listening, watching, we again welcome the input from anyone else who has yet to provide comments or questions. Otherwise, it would be hard for us to consider any potential interest that they represent. Last word.
Indulge me just for an announcement, which is that we're scheduled, the town will be presenting the draft master plan for the town land. That still appears on the 22nd in the evening with orders.
Before we close. Oh, great, thank you. Before we continue and officially close this chapter, any issues or things that you wanted to just raise for future meetings or anything along those lines?
No, I, I think, you know, I, like, as I've said, I really like the way that the process is organized. It makes it very easy. So not very easy, it's a lot of information. But it's, I think it's pretty efficient. And I, so I'm kind of collecting all this stuff. And I'd say whether it's the next meeting or the meeting after we have that catch call, at that point, I may be, oh jeez, we talked about this, I don't have it. Something I forgot or something, you know, that I'd wanted to differently or whatever. And at that point, right now, I don't, I don't feel like, you know, I think that these conservation issues, you know, that, you know, if I've been looking at that one section more, I think we need to do something there. Like, it's too intensive. So, but other than that, I think most things are. Like it's too intensive. So, but other than that, I think most things are, are, you know, I, I think pretty well designed. And, uh, the feedback and comments we're getting, I think, is recognizing that from the technical.
Okay. So I think for the next meeting, um, I guess if we could just follow up and ask you to put together what you believe is the list of sort of to-dos. Um, um, I'd ask people, the members of the board and staff as well to, you know, if that way we have anything extra, we can tack onto that or go back and forth. That would, at least in my mind, the goal would be to leave the next meeting on May 6th. With essentially a comprehensive list of what should be incorporated to whatever the new plan looks like. Um, and then also that way, for some reason, something is not included, that's the opportunity for you to go, we did not include this because X. Um, and that's the one thing I would ask is that if there's something, there's something that you cannot, or frankly, don't want to, and wanna push that issue forward. Um, you know, having that explanation as to why, or, or if you've done something else to mitigate that, then that would be sort of great as well. Um, and I would also flag out that unless any of the mitigation, I would call them the more, the smaller, more targeted mitigation. Um, at first I'm gonna, CONCOM sort of flagged some of their ideas, uh, welcome those, um, as well. Okay. Anything else with the applicant before we continue? Yeah, anything?
What time? Seven?
Thirty.
Thirty.
And you have a, yeah, we have, we have seven fifteen. Is there anything else in the agenda?
Thank you.
And we will continue the hearing from May the sixth to seventh.
Second.
New motion, we have a second and discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And the public hearing for the comprehensive permit application will continue to May 6th at seven thirty. With that, thank you.
Do you want to coordinate with Michael because that time?
We've got one administrative thing to deal with. Can you stick around for just a couple of minutes?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, so that closes all the agenda items, except if we can just take five minutes just to finish off the, the march. Minutes. I just want to bang that out real quick. So I think we had like two or three pages left. Let me go through that and then we'll be done.
Starting at page six?
Uh, sure.
That's what we have there are?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, actually on page seven, um, third paragraph from the bottom. Next to that sentence, David Hart Middle asked to confirm that there will not be any A groups. I think that's a tight one.
On page, on six, the third paragraph. You can dosk right name there and they get it.
Do you dosk?
Yeah. I've been called a lot. As a Navy in a, I was called instant dodo.
Any more comments, questions, edits on pages six and seven?
Moving the crew to the municipal office, eleven thousand.
I just have one change during page nine. Where it says, I actually moved the clothes and I actually seconded that. I don't think I can do that.
Oh, that was, uh, yeah, there any clues or second?
Okay.
I think.
It's okay. And, and actually in the paragraph number four. During, I encourage the board to look at the application altogether instead of in, is it in separate pieces? Instead of in separate pieces, am I? And actually in the next sentence, he stated that there may be.
Increases.
Increases and decreases in parts of the application. All right. Uh, we have a, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Uh, we have a motion, we have a second and a discussion. Hearing none, uh, all in favor, except for the minutes as amended. Aye. Motion passes. Uh, with that, uh, oh, uh, and then just, um, also wanted to, last administrative item. Uh, that I got to is just to note the correspondence. Uh, we have four pieces of correspondence through which were referenced as part of the 40B application. Uh, we also received a piece of correspondence from Janet Reeder, dated April 4th. I would refer the board to do that, uh, to detect that already. Um. Any member updates? Still green advisory committee update?
Um, well, we have the, uh, the designer working on the form of the, of the report and that's ongoing. People meeting next Thursday and just to do additional views. But it's ongoing. It's still looking at, uh, in the May, June time period. Uh, one thing I should say though, um, I'm not gonna continue on the committee after this. I've got more things that I played.
Of course.
So, um, but, but, you know, so I just want to give people time to think about what they'd like to take over on the green committee stuff.
I apologize for ignorance, but like, is, what's the purpose of the green committee sort of after the application?
I think that's still, I mean, there are still, uh. I think they've moved to implementation.
Okay.
Uh, and, and working with committees and residents to, to, to build continued awareness and, and encourage people to take this stuff to.
Yeah, I guess my, yeah, the reason I was, I was asking because if you're gonna be stepping down from it, like, is there necessarily? I'm, I'm not opposed, but is there an urgency to have someone take over? Or is it something that possibly we could wait on and then deal with it, say, in the summer? I don't know.
Well, again, I'm, obviously I'm going to, gonna stay on the committee until June.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry. I thought you were stepping down like that.
Oh, no, 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 no. I'm, I'm.
Just not gonna re-up.
I'm, I'm wanting to give an advance notice. So it doesn't have to be in this, at least, you know. It nominated, I won't run it, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It just wants to work on your, on the form.
Okay, I, we appreciate that. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we adjourn the meeting at nine twenty.
Second. Motion, second and discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned at nine twenty. Go, you come.